Legal notice was all three, so. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission for Town South Windsor for Tuesday, April 24th, 2022. If everyone could please rise to salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll turn to the secretary to read the public notice.
Good evening. To be published in the Journal Inquirer Friday, May 13th and Thursday, May 19th, 2022, South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following. Number one, PZC-sponsored revised text amendment, delete section 2.24, a one-year moratorium on retail cannabis establishments, and add section 7.24, hybrid use cannabis dispensary and production facilities, including definitions, modified table 4.1.1A, permitted commercial and industrial uses to add hybrid-use dispensary by special exception in the general commercial zone, cannabis production facilities and micro-cultivator facilities by special exception in the industrial zone, and modified table 3.1.1A, permitted residential uses to include micro-cultivator of cannabis by special exception on farms in excess of 50 acres in the rural residential zone, subject to specific setbacks, continued from April 26th, 2022. Number two, application 22-07P, Evergreen Walk LLC, multi-family text amendment, request to amend specific requirements for multi-family residential use in the Buckland Gateway Development Zone, including section 4.2.15A, point 2. E, to increase the number of units permitted to 365 units, and modify section 4.2.15A, point 2. C, to modify the criteria for achieving the required 2:1 residential to commercial ratio for mixed-use developments within the zone. Number three, application 22-08P, Evergreen Walk LLC, request to modify the Evergreen Walk general plan of development in accordance with section 4.2.15D, point 2, and approval of a special exception pursuant to section 4.2.15D, point 1, for a 165-unit residential development for a portion of 151 Buckland Road within Evergreen Walk, known as Unit 7C, and being approximately 2,000 feet west of Buckland Road and 1,000 feet north of Smith Street, Buckland Road Gateway Development Zone. Copies of the application are on file in the office of the town clerk and/or planning department and online at HTTPS, www.southwindsor- At this hearing, interested persons may be heard and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, at 860-644-2511, extension 2329. Bart Pesakonis, Chairman, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Chairman, for the benefit of the public, should we indicate items two and three are being postponed for anybody that may be listening or wanting to come and join us?
Yep. So, application 22-07P, Evergreen Walk LLC for the multi-family text amendment, and application 22.22-08P, Evergreen Walk LLC, modified at general plan, are both postponed at the applicant's wishes. Those will be heard on June 14th, I believe. Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, any letters that we had to read into the record will be read at that time, not tonight. Okay. So, tonight, we will be having a continuation of public hearing for the revised PZC-sponsored revised text amendment. And our order of business tonight will be to hear from the applicant, then we'll hear from town to staff, then we will hear from members of the public, then we will hear from commissioners. If everyone could put their cellphone on silent, we would appreciate it. And at this time, I will turn to our town staff for an update, if there is one.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, first of all, you should have received the revised text. It's been redlined with changes from our last public hearing. The one thing I did change throughout the whole thing was calling it cannabis as opposed to marijuana. When I looked up the acronym that you wanted me to define in there, it is cannabis, and that's what the law refers it to. So cannabis has been kind of replaced throughout the whole thing. But the other changes in red that I want to bring your attention to relate to adding a definition of micro-cultivator. Again, we had the request at our last meeting relating to growing cannabis in our rural residential zones on properties of 50 acres or more. So, on page 4.1, you'll see that addition into the language for the residential zone. We also made the change of having it be a special exception use in the industrial zone as well instead of by site plan. That's a change reflected on that page. And then the other documents here are the use tables, and again, it's being incorporated into use tables by special exception in the residential and the industrial zone, as we talked about. And then the other change that I made was under the industrial zone where we allow accessory uses, where we would allow a showroom or a certain percentage of retail sales to occur. I put a statement in there would prohibit that from occurring within an industrial zone. So, a flat-out statement, not allowing any retail sales. So, that kind of takes in the changes that you received. I also provided you with a map as well as a listing of, you know, this comes right out of the assessor's records of properties over 50 acres that are in the rural residential zone. So, you can see visually where they're kind of located. I guess the word of caution I would have is, you know, people can combine properties, and you can get to 50 acres a lot of different ways that may not be depicted on this map. So, but this does at least give you an idea of the magnitude of properties that exist today that are over 50 acres, not owned by the town. And the last thing I just want to read into the record, I did have a conversation with Chief Lindstrom about the text amendment previously and about the changes being suggested, and then I did send over to him the wording. And I just want to read into the record a portion of an email that I received back from him. He wanted me to share with the commission. He says he, to read, I had talked to him about it, and he says, "I just would ask the board be cognizant of the fact that fencing requirements that I had mentioned," I had mentioned it had to be fenced eight feet around the perimeter. He said, "And the standoff distances referenced in the text are fine, but as the case with most of these things, there are pros and cons. For instance, a 400-foot standoff from the nearest street makes a business less conspicuous and perhaps protects it from being seen and entered by those with nefarious intentions, but it also makes it difficult for us to patrol and observe. The standoff distances from property lines and dwellings may also make these sites difficult for owners to monitor and observe. These are the cons to the pros of having them in locations that are less prominent." So, that was his comment he wanted me to share with you on that.
Excuse me, who was that from?
That was from Chief Lindstrom from the police department. And that really concludes the comments I have for you tonight.
Okay. So, at this time, I will turn to members of the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. We should have a sign-in sheet there if, write up, if you could. If you could put on your microphone, please.
I thought my voice was projecting. No problem. Good evening. My name is Bernard Thomas. I live at 29 Sunset Terrace, South Windsor, Connecticut. And after our last meeting, there was a question in regards to the security information about what has to happen, the fencing and stuff like that. This is from the Connecticut, from the Connecticut Legislative on what needs to happen with the fences in regards to like 12 feet. But here goes all the information. I printed it out for you all. I'd just like to pass it out. That's all. I just want to make sure you have that information to know how strenuous the security has to be, especially for that product. Okay?
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward.
Joe Kennedy, 81 Allison Drive. I'm also the Chair of the Agricultural Commission. First, I'd like to thank the commissioners for their service and their dedication. I read through your work here, and I'd like to speak to two of the amendments. One is the hybrid-use marijuana retail store. Now that it's both medical and adult use, I think it's a common-sense solution. You have, everyone knows 75 John Fitch is the retailer that's been selling medical marijuana forever, and people don't even know it. I mean, he does a professional job. I think, I watched a couple of your meetings, and you had mentioned about a hybrid use because you only allowed one retail because of the small population. And these people have been excellent. And a couple of you mentioned hybrid, hybrid is the way to go. That way, you've got someone that's got the experts there already, and I think it's just a common-sense solution. I also would like to speak about a marijuana production facility on 50 acres of farmland. I also think that's common sense. And I know two farmers, Bruce and Thomas, who would like to put a marijuana greenhouse facility on Collins Farm, and I also think that's good. These amendments are business-friendly and farm-friendly, and I thank the commissioners for their good work. Thank you.
You can leave that on. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Parry.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, I'll turn to commissioners.
I do believe we have a letter for the record to be read. It was an email, I think.
It should be in the materials that was in front of you.
And a little housekeeping before you read that, Steve. We do have a couple commissioners missing tonight. So, I'll officially announce Commissioner Carey will sit for Commissioner Foley, Commissioner Bernstein will sit for Commissioner Vettieri. Okay.
Okay, so, this is from Aaron Carbonne. Trying to find the actual letter. This is a series of emails that forwarded it all to me. Okay. So, "My name is Aaron Carbonne. My family and I have lived in South Windsor for over 35 years. Our children went through the town school system. Our schools had the DARE program, which taught kids to just say no to drugs. Now, we need to say, 'Just say no.'" "I coached sports in South Windsor for some 30 years and always told kids, 'Don't do drugs.' Are we now sending a message that it's okay? Marijuana is a gateway drug that leads to other drugs, and we're in the middle of an opioids crisis. It's dangerous, and we can't even adequately police it. I don't care what other towns are doing. We need to be leaders, not followers. If prostitution were legalized, would you allow a whorehouse in South Windsor? If another town's politicians were to jump off a bridge, would South Windsors follow? Certainly, there are those on the commission who know of someone who has been affected by drug use. You know it's harmful in many ways." "The Connecticut law legalizing recreational marijuana should be repealed. The use, sale, or distribution of marijuana is against federal law. Are you willing to risk the potential loss of federal funds to our schools? It would be a disgrace to condone recreational marijuana in South Windsor." And there's an attachment. Which I'm not quite sure what it is. It's hard to understand what that is, but that's the letter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're at commissioners. Commissioner Bernstein.
Thank you. So, I read the Redline draft. It's very good, I think. It's very comprehensive. There was just one question I had that I didn't see it answered within the draft, and it is under section 7.24, Hybrid Use Cannabis Dispensary and Production Facilities. It's the third paragraph, and it says, "Hybrid Use Cannabis Dispensary Facility, A Place of Business Where Cannabis May Be Dispensed or Sold at Retail to Qualifying Medical Patients, Primary Caregivers, and to Qualifying Adult Use Consumers." And I'll stop right there because it does go on. I was curious. I didn't see how qualifying adult-use consumers is defined.
Which, could you repeat that paragraph number?
So, it's page 4-1.
Yep.
And under section 7.24, Hybrid Use Cannabis Dispensary and Production Facilities, it's underscored, and then under that, 1, 2, the third paragraph that starts with Hybrid Use Cannabis Dispensary Facility. Do you see that?
Yep.
And then, if you just read the first two lines, "A place of business where cannabis may be dispensed or sold at retail to qualifying medical patients, primary caregivers, and to qualifying adult-use consumers." And I was just curious. I didn't see any definition for what a qualifying adult-use consumer is. Could my...
My guess is it age. I mean, I think you have to be 21 years old to be able to consume it. So, I would imagine they're referring to an age restriction in that.
So, I was actually just going to say, so my son just turned 21, so he can just walk in and get it. He's a qualifying adult-use consumer.
The age is 21, so I assume that's what you're referring to. I don't know, but it only makes sense that that's what it would be.
Yeah, I mean, everything else in this is just so buttoned up, and that, to me, kind of stuck out.
We can certainly look to define it.
Yeah. It was more of a curiosity than anything else. It just, other than that, I think it's a really well-done document, so I don't have any other...
Excuse me, Paul. I don't, can we compare copies for a minute?
Yeah, you want to see what I'm looking at?
Yeah, because I don't think this is, I don't, this is an old copy, isn't it? Why isn't it numbered?
Well, you should be looking at something that's got 42623 on the top. Is that what you have? Yeah. So, then, we're talking about the definition right here.
Okay.
He's right here in the definition.
Yeah.
Okay. You're in definition.
Yes, I'm in definition. Sorry about that.
I was back on the next page under number three.
Yeah, it's actually, they're all, they all say page 4-1.
Yeah. It happens.
So, sorry to get caught up in the weeds on this. No pun intended, but...
So, has your question been answered?
If the answer is a qualifying adult-use consumer, is anyone 21 or over? If that's the answer, then that's the answer.
Okay.
I mean, I guess my instinct is to say I would want to think on if that needs further thought. But somewhere, there's probably some legal jargon about who can and can't. I don't know. I'm a little out of my area of expertise on marijuana. That was Cheech and Chong days for me.
Okay. Is that all?
That's all I have. Yeah.
Commissioner Cavick Nero?
Thank you. I just have a quick comment. So, I mean, I'll agree with Commissioner Bernstein. A lot of work was put in, a lot of thorough and strict wording to really guide us through this, and I don't see any reason to turn this down. I mean, there's other towns, and I know it was mentioned, and for a very good reason, other towns have followed suit. Within the past two weeks, Dan Barry, Stafford, and Old Saybrook have overturned their moratoriums, whether those were a year long or six months long. They followed a similar suit that we're doing, is that they had the moratorium, and they have very, very strict and specific regulations on where they can be located and other types. I don't see any reason why to turn this down. And yeah, I'll just leave it at that. I don't want to take up too much time, but just supporting it, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner LeBlanc?
I think it's very well-written. My biggest concern in the last meeting was security requirements, and one of the packets I would submitted, 21A, dash XXX, 7 and 8, I think were pretty well laid out. I read through them, and I think that certainly nails the security issue down. Personally, I'd wanted any issue having an establishment like this. I'd seen these locations out of state, a particular one up in Portland, Maine. I happened to park there before a marathon last year. And it's not like these places are hangouts, and it's like it's this odd culture of something wrong. It's not. It's a retail establishment. It's, to tell you the truth, this place was like a fancy package store. There is state regulation that'll be involved in this. It's not like really it's up to the town. I think the state will handle this properly, like other states have. I don't see this as any negativity to the town, and it's something that's, kind of get legalized it. I mean, might as well take advantage of the situation and capitalize on it. The other towns are, let's face it, if we don't do anything, drive the Manchester, I guess we're opening up some giant store over in your Trader Joe's, I understand. So, might as well, might as well grab it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
Okay, so, I'm looking at table 411A, and going down to the Redline Cannabis Production Facility.
Hold on one minute, Steve. Let me just make sure I'm on the same document as you. Okay.
Right now, it's only allowed in industrial areas. And I want to go down to micro-cultivator, that's also only allowed in industrial areas. And I'm wondering if maybe Mr. Kennedy can comment on whether we want to limit micro-cultivators to industrial zones, or whether they should be allowed in other zones where farming is allowed.
I should have made it clear. I was looking, not industrial, for farm, residential farmland. Like, there are few farmers, a farm with 50 acres or more could have a production facility. So, I was looking for, did I misread it? Was that included? Change from industrial and farmland, or what?
Well, the way it's drafted is a production facility would be going in an industrial zone. That's how it was drafted. And then we added the micro-cultivation, and we've added language that would allow it in a rural residential zone with 50 acres or more, or it could be permitted. And like, I have someone talking to me about wanting to do it in the industrial zone, in a building, micro-cultivator. So...
I guess my question is, are we cutting anybody out, the way this is all put together, that we might be able to take advantage of this that appear on your map that you sent us, for example?
Not anybody that has contacted me. They would be accommodated by this regulation.
Okay.
So, Steve, farmland would come under residential zone? Is that how that is? No? Or this farm, rural? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bernstein. Right. Yeah, I was hoping it would be farmland, so the farmers could get in on it. So, thanks.
So, it's like, where are we? Let's see. So, I'm trying to figure, where are we allowing the micro-cultivator to be in other locations?
Michelle, your microphone's off.
It's at the bottom of the second-to-last page, micro-cultivator cannabis by special exception, right? At the bottom of the page, you see it there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's in the industrial zone. You also have it proposed in the rural residential zone per the requirements that were talked about, the separating distance, 50 acres. So, you have special requirements for that.
Did I miss a page here?
If you're looking for where the, the language for the rural residential zone is on page three, the last red paragraph on page three.
Did you see?
I, is he, is, Steve, are you looking for?
Yeah, I was kind of expecting it to be in the table somewhere.
There is a table 3.1, right? And it's in that table. It's listed in that table. You, you don't have that?
Oh, 3.1's over here. Okay. So, 3.1, point 1A.
So, it's allowed there.
Micro-cultivators, the Article VII special regulations.
Okay. All right, I guess I got my papers shuffled. So, okay, so, rural residential covers the farmers that we want to cover who aren't in industrial zone. farmers that we wanna cover, who aren't in industrial zones, okay. I guess my other concern, I don't know if it's a concern or not, but we define adult use cannabis dispensary facility, but we don't, do we say anywhere that it's, you know, other than in a hybrid setting, it's not allowed?
No, you don't, I mean, you could take it out of your definition, since you're not gonna have it as a use permitted, if you wanted to, it's not, your table tells you if it's permitted or not, and your table does not permit it, so if you wanted to eliminate it out of your definitions, that would be fine.
I actually like having the definition, I just.
At this point, you've chosen not to allow it as a standalone, just retail, you want it?
So, just affected as not listed as a permitted use, someone's not gonna come in and say, well, this is a similar use, we should be able to do this.
I don't think so, 'cause you've gone through this process, I mean, to me, at that point, they should come in with a text amendment to change it.
Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Dexter?
Just one for Michelle, the reason we put the moratorium in place, as far as I remember, was to be sure we knew everything coming from the state was complete, and that, you know, we had all of our ducks in a row, and we're confident about that now, they've given enough information.
Yeah, it's funny you should ask, I had someone recently tell me that they heard the quotas were going away, the one and whatnot, and I've done some research and asked, and I have not been able to validate that as a true statement, so, as far as I know, we have all the information.
Okay, yeah.
To act on.
And then, the only other thing, just interesting, the fifty acre in the RR zone, if you take away the Town of South Windsor properties, there aren't that many.
No, there not, you know, a lot of your farming is in the A forty zone on Main Street, so.
Oh, I see.
That's where a lot of, you might have picked up other properties.
And are the properties on this map that are not town-owned, open space, I mean, not open space, open, they're not, nobody's living on them?
Yeah, those are all vacant, well, I believe they're all fifty acre vacant properties, they may have a farm home on it, but they are not.
Thank you.
Farming, yeah.
Thank you.
Or the Carino property, for example, is just a wooded piece, so that's not farmed.
Okay, Commissioner Carey?
I think that this makes sense to do, you know, I think that it helps our farmers, and as other people have said, you know, somebody's gonna do it, so, I like the fact that you can't have retail sales at the farm, I think that makes sense as well, so it would just be wholesale. That would be, that's correct interpretation, right?
Pardon me?
They can't have any retail at the farm, right, it has to be just wholesale.
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. The properties that the town owns, I believe some of those are open space, correct, Michelle?
Yeah, a lot of them are around the town, the Nevers Road Park area, which is all open area there, and that's a good portion of them, and then there's other, let's see, what else we have, you know, you have the two golf courses are located on here.
Right.
Because they're over fifty acres, I'm just trying to think what other town properties, the Priest Farms on there, that's a, over fifty acres.
Okay, but hypothetically, if we pass this text amendment, the properties that aren't town-owned eventually could, because I heard that.
Eventually qualify.
The quota numbers are going away twenty twenty-four, correct?
That is what the original law said, that twenty twenty-four, things would be looked at again.
Okay.
But that, that's a true statement, that anybody else that had fifty acres would have the same opportunity to take advantage of the regulation.
And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I'm just stating possibilities. Was our revised language sent to CROG, or no?
No, there was not.
Okay. I'd be interested to see what CROG has to say about that.
Okay.
Just the additional.
The farming aspect of it particularly?
Right.
Are you interested in?
Because, as I heard mentioned previously, it's, the micro cultivator is not farming, it's not farming as per the law, correct, maybe you can?
Yeah, that is correct, the law is very clear that it says this is not an agriculture, agricultural activity, the law states that, so, any farmer that chooses to do it would not be doing under the guise of farming, they'd be doing under the guise of a business, a production facility, like any other industrial user, in my opinion, from a taxing perspective and that kind of thing, 'cause it is not considered a farming operation, under the law.
Right. Do you know, are there any other towns that have approved cannabis in zones, other than the commercial and industrial zones?
I have not seen any requests, you know, I do get to see ones that other towns are doing, I don't look at them all, but I have not seen any requests along those lines, I would certainly be happy to do a little research and see if there have been any, I know the state's keeping an inventory as towns make regulations, I could certainly reach out and see if I can find out if any other towns have.
Yeah, I just wanna proceed and know all the information. One of the things we haven't really discussed is odors. And just going back to what we were just talking about, I've reviewed a bunch of the towns' language, and what I'm always seeing is they allow it in commercial and industrial zones only, I'm not saying we can't allow it in RR zones, but I just wanna, you know, state for the record, let me go back to odors. In some of the review that I've seen, odors for cultivating facilities have been a concern of residents in other towns, and they have, I think, pretty, or not consistently, but the ones I've seen, also add, let me see, on the article four, which has special regulations on one side, and the seven point two, four point one, hybrid use cannabis dispensary facilities permitted by special exception, the numbered three, their typical language says, no hybrid dash use cannabis dispensary facility shall be located within five hundred feet of a residence? Comma, municipal building, public park, public recreation area, licensed, adult, or childcare, so on and so forth, but they have put that in, to make sure there's a distance from a residence to a facility that might be meant in odors, I haven't really heard that talked about much here, but I think it's something good to consider. Other towns have done the five hundred feet by property lines versus like an exact house, so, it could be, but that would be, I think, detrimental to the proposal for the RR zone.
You're talking two different things, though, because you're talking about a dispensary facility, which is where you're retailing it.
Right.
Versus a production facility, so, the reference on three that you're talking about wouldn't apply to the RR zone, because we're not talking about dispensing it in the RR zone, right?
Right, but if you're cultivating it, you're gonna have smells.
No, I understand that, I'm just saying the section that you're referencing is not appropriate for.
Right.
RR zone, okay, just as long as we're clear.
But, I'm using that example.
Yeah, yeah.
My thought is, when we have a distance, and right now, there's two distances, and I think those languages came from possibly the state of Connecticut, one is five hundred feet, and one is a thousand feet. When I first read this, before we had the applicant here, I was like, well, I'd rather see a thousand feet on both of them, and keep it consistent, you know, so we're not, oh, this one's two hundred and fifty, this one's five hundred, this is a thousand, and it gets slippery at that point, you know, you, I think, wanna be consistent with the lines. I'm gonna go on to some more of my questions. Some of the language that I've seen around also limits cannabis establishments to at least fifteen hundred feet from each other, and when we're talking about cannabis versus marijuana, and it's kinda like bourbon and whiskey, not all whiskey is bourbon, but all bourbon, I believe, is whiskey, so, yeah, and cannabis, not all cannabis is marijuana, but all marijuana is cannabis, so, it's, it is what it is. Some other language that I've seen is micro cultivators and medical marijuana production will not be allowed in any residential building, so, I understood that they didn't want it to be a commercial-type manufacturing building, or at least, maybe that's what Peter DiMali said, and I think that was in the minutes, but I think it'd be important to make the distinction that it shouldn't be allowed in any residential building. I also am curious, these type of facilities, what proposed hours of operation might come with that, and I know that can get regulated by the special exception, but Mr. Thomas, would you have any information as far as hours of operation, and if so, if you could come to the microphone? For the multi-cultivator?
Currently, the time slots that we're looking at is more of like an eight to five type of scenario, Monday through Friday.
Was that eight to five, nine to five?
Eight AM to five PM.
Okay.
Standard business time, that's what we're currently looking at.
Could I ask a question, just how many employees would an operation like that, I'm just trying to.
With the micro cultiv?
Yeah, the size you're talking about.
Anywhere from six, no more than twelve.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd just like to get some more information on those items.
So, I will resend this to CROG, and ask them, I will also do some research to see if any other communities have allowed it in residential zones.
Okay.
And on farming particularly, I think the odors thing is something that I know, that was one of the reasons why I think a special exception is more appropriate than as a right permitted use, because there may be some opportunity to understand more about the odors, if one does come in, I know from conversations with some of the folks that have contacted me, you know, there's a lot of state-of-the-art equipment out there that they're using in some of these production facilities, I don't know how that equates to a greenhouse, and whether or not there would be similar kinds of equipment used in a greenhouse, so, I can, see if I can do a little bit more research along those lines, because, you know, your comment I have heard before, odors being a complaint when it's grown out in the open, I'm sorry, not within a greenhouse, I've heard that, you know, out west, that kind of concerns expressed, those kind of cover the issues that we've talked about? I will get the definition of what the adult, who can use it, really, you know, to answer your question.
Thank you.
Find out what that is.
Yeah. And the five, you mentioned the five hundred foot, correct?
Oh, no, I didn't, I can, now, what do you wanna do with the five hundred feet, you wanna add that into the?
Just from residences.
From resident, okay, yeah, yeah, I did have that note, yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Thomas, could I have you come up again, I got a question for you? In the presentation that I saw, it had, I believe, two hundred and four hundred feet for locations, if.
About here.
Which, is that this one?
Seven twenty-four, two.
If we had five hundred feet in there, would that be something that would make it impossible for you, or would five hundred foot dimension?
I'm gonna refer to Bruce in regards to this.
Okay.
Bruce Snow, Parker Bernard, at the Collins Farm. Well, I know you're concerned about the odors. From the facility, I can tell you, I just spread manure on the field the other night, there's an odor, and we don't get any complaints, but, I mean, I think that's, that's a bigger odor than what you're gonna get from, you know, from the facility itself, growing the cannabis, but, you know, you get that, we could live near any farm, you know, at certain times a year, right? But the, your question was the, you know, the two hundred yards, or two hundred feet from property line, or four hundred feet from any street, is what we're requesting for a location for the facility, and then you want us to move it five hundred feet from a building or a property line?
Asking if five hundred feet is a restriction that you cannot comply with from the property line?
It would hamper some of our plans because of certain wetland areas on the property, and we were trying to avoid, of course, you know, placing this, the, it's gonna impact any of the wetland. On the property, there is, you know, extensive areas that are, that are wet on that fifty acres, but, I, you know, Peter would know better, Peter DiMali would know better with his surveying, whether there is an area we could, you know, we could put the facility in that is five hundred feet from any property line, and would not impact wetland on the property, that, if anything, that could be the problem, that could be, you know, where we're hampered, who's moving the facility that far away from the property line, and avoiding wet, you know, wet areas.
Yeah.
At the same time.
Okay, well, if you could review that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Currently, I'd just like to say, we're growing, we've been growing hemp outdoor for the past four years, and what we're talking about is growing recreational marijuana within a contained building, the odors wouldn't be as strong as the hemp that is currently growing outside. Yeah, and we haven't had any odor issues, or, you know, for many nearby residents for the hemp that we've been growing for three years and then.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Steve, did you have a question?
Yeah, just to follow up on Commissioner Bernstein's question about qualifying adult-use consumers. We do, and another paragraph that I can't find a site, the state law. And I assume that this qualifying word applies to what the state law would consider a qualifying user. I mean, is that sufficient, do we think, to, to define who we mean by qualifying adult-use consumer? Just because we're, we're saying in here that you have to follow CGS 21A408. Actually, I think I'm looking at the top of 724-1. There's a lead-in paragraph, "All, all Connecticut state regulations and laws on dispensing of cannabis shall be adhered to and form the basis for local regulation of cannabis sales." And I assume those laws define who's a qualifying customer.
Yeah, I'm actually have the law up, and I'm looking at the definitions and, it's not in the definitions, but the law's very long. So I, I will, before the next meeting, I'll see what I can find out for you, is to, if they define it or if it's just the age that's the qualifier.
Okay. I guess my impression of typical agricultural products is that it's kind of a 24/7 operation, so. And I guess I'll ask, is it Mr. Thomas, if you wouldn't mind coming up again? When, when we ask you, you said you were going to limit the operations to eight, eight to five. Are you, are you saying that there wouldn't be any workers in there at other hours? Is, is that realistic for that type of a business?
It would be, depending on the lighting that would be going on inside. You know, when we talk about the workers working, it's, it's constantly checking out the plants. And technically, if you had, you know, watering it, could be a seven-day process, but that wouldn't take a full crew to go in there and water the plants, et cetera. Usually at night, the plants have to have a certain amount of light in, in the process of growing. Some of these plants, depending on what type of plants you get, they vary from different, like, weeks of maturity and stuff like that. That's how you regulate it. And then, again, this is a process that we're going, we're, we're trying to, you don't want to automatically start off going around the clock and come to find out that you've wasted time and money. You have to make sure that the product that we're growing is, you know, well-cared, well-maintained and, and constantly looked at. So the idea of having the small crew, because once the plants are growing, you're basically, it's just, you're, you're, you're checking it out, making sure that, you know, you're not growing any males to mess with the female plants, et cetera. Different plants have, have to be monitored and cared for differently, so.
I guess, I, I'm, I'm trying to turn it around. I understand that that's how you envision the day going, but if we get a complaint that there were some trucks at the building, you know, at 5:00 AM or midnight, because you needed to get in there and do something, that, that restriction would, would, could lead to complaints that you're not operating within the approved regulation if we limit you to five to eight or anything else like that. I'm, I'm just thinking, common sense is going to dictate when you bring workers to the site. And the impact on neighbors, I think, is minimal. As with any farm, you might have to do some work at an off hour. I'm just wondering why we would want to add that restriction in there of a particular number of hours.
I understand, but also, the facility is just going to be behind the bus company. And the bus company is going different hours, too.
Yeah, I'm actually trying not to restrict you, okay?
I get, I get that. I get that.
And then.
And I appreciate that, too.
So the distance that you were talking about to a residence, I think we discussed that previously, the 200, 400 numbers that are in this 742, 724-2 paragraph. I think we kind of looked at the fact that there may actually be a residence on one of these farms, where the farmer lives. So that's the 200 feet from any dwelling. And I think some of these farmlands are actually very narrow. I don't know how wide some of these behind Governor's Highway are, but you know, we really making several of these 50-acre sites unusable by putting, by enlarging the distances in here? Maybe Michelle should answer that question. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I think I've.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner LeBlanc?
Oh, wait a minute, I didn't get an answer from Michelle.
You know, without evaluating them exactly, I mean, you, you could be, most of them that are kind of more square-shaped are owned by the town, so there are a couple linear ones. Although, if you look at the one that they're talking about, it's a linear piece as well, so. Again, until you know site-specific where someone's trying to do it, you're not going to know that.
Okay, Commissioner LeBlanc?
Yeah, sure, like, you know, a couple of questions I have regards to Commissioner Wagner's concerns about hours of operation. I was thinking of the building itself, and I realize that you're growing this indoors. And I know with tropical plants, there's a lot of intense lighting you use, but will this greenhouse, so to speak, have a glow effect at night? Because I'm assuming it's 24 hours of lighting you would need for the cultivation of cannabis, I assume? And will they have a glowing effect on the neighbors around there? That speaks to the distance requirements of being away from it.
Yeah, the, well, the greenhouses themselves have blackout shades, because you have to control the lighting, the, the amount of lighting that it gets. You may have to, you may have to block out sunlight at certain times of the year, never mind, you know, artificial light at night, but you can always close the blackout shades, keep the light within the facility or keep the light outside of the facility if, if needed, so.
Yeah, I was trying to, you know, mitigate the effects with the neighbors with some glowing effect of that are surrounding the property.
Yep, they have shaded, shaded windows, yeah. And the windows on either, basically the rooftop.
The other question I have is like, unlike, I worked, I used to pick shade-grown tobacco and all that, you know, growing up in town, but after the cultivation, I realized that there's parts of the plant that are desirable and there's other parts that aren't. What is done with the rest of the plant? And I'm assuming that there's no THC levels in the waste? Or is there? And what do you do with the waste part of the plant?
Things like that, very, very limited THC or cannabinoids in that, in those products. We're looking into what other, I guess, products could be manufactured from the waste of the, of the cannabis plant? But if nothing else, it's going to be ground up and used for mulch.
It's only if someone's going to raid your mulch and, like, carry it away or anything, right?
Yeah, right.
Hope not, but, all right, no, thank you. I tried to ask that question, but thank you.
You bet.
Okay, Commissioner Bernstein?
Thank you. So I was, I was intrigued by the discussion about odors. I can't figure out, and again, I, I know nothing about farming. I can't figure out why this crop would emit odors more so than any other crop. But I think the comment about the manure, at least for me, makes a lot of sense. I mean, it's a pretty compelling argument. The other thing, it seems to me, is where one neighbor might find the odor, if there is one, offensive, another neighbor might find it pleasant. So, you know, I just don't know that the odor, unless, Mr. Chairman, unless you have data there that's suggesting that there, this is a compelling thing, I, to me, that seems like a non-issue. Another issue, totally different, that I, I want to bring up, listening to some of the comments. So on the sales side, we know that we can have one dispensary, right? Everyone understands that, there's one place because of our population. On the production manufacturing, micro-cultivating side, whether it's industrial, general, commercial, or our zone, are we not limiting the number of producers, manufacturers, cultivators?
The state limits it.
The state limits it.
You're correct. Until the state decides, you know, that's part of the quota based on your population. And until the state changes those numbers, you're limited to one of each.
One?
One cultiv-, one cultivator or production facility and one retailer, however you choose to do it.
Okay, so.
If you choose to allow it in your community.
That's right now, though. That's not saying in the future. I believe I've heard that those numbers might end in 2024, correct? So at that point, it could be anybody who can qualify for a license could have the opportunity. So we have to do the regulations with that in mind.
And I think I made the comment at the last public hearing, you could have a couple people come in for approvals, because you have to have your approval in hand to apply to the state. Not everybody's obviously going to get the license, so, you know, just because you see one or two or three come in here, you may or may not see them get licensed. It's competitive.
Okay, all right, well, that helps understand that, then. That's all I have. Thanks.
Yep, and as far as the smells, as I said, that was brought up in other towns, really. And with the manure comparison, not every farmer spreads manure every day. It, but, you know, if they're cultivating, there could be smells escaping every day. I don't know what their air systems are like. I have very little knowledge in that aspect. So any information would be helpful for us making our decisions.
I have to add that as far as odors go, I know when you have like a live marijuana plant, it smells just like you're smoking it. It, it gives off, especially when it starts to flower up. And it does give off an odor, and that, that thought, maybe you're concerned with having a roomful of it. Does it have a, you know, the sum of all parts, and does that drift over to the neighborhood? You know, like, comes on your back window or something. It, it does give off the smell.
And I'm not that knowledgeable in cannabis.
I'm not sure if, yeah, I'm not sure, but I was up in upstate Vermont, it had to been two years ago, and I'm driving by Mad River Glen, and he passed you their sign on Route 17, and you have acres of this stuff, whether it's THC-driven or not. You really smell it heading down the road. It smells just like you're smoking pot. There's acres of it.
Yeah, please, Mr. Snow.
Yeah, the, I agree. It, it will smell while it's flowering, you know, especially in the later stages, which is, you know, two, three weeks while it's at its final stages before you harvest it. So that's where you get the, you know, the strongest odor from the plant itself. The facilities, I understand, though, have to have a air filtration system in them to, for air exchange. And you can't allow any pollens to get in the building, you know, or insects, or any, you know, anything through the filtration system. So the air exchange is, you know, pretty much got a filtration system. I'm not familiar right now on how well that, you know, eliminates the odor, but it must reduce it some, somewhat.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just briefly touch on Commissioner's LeBlanc question on the dark, we did put a statement here about dark-skY compliant lighting in the farming zone, so any application will come and have to demonstrate dark-skY compliant with the lighting proposed.
Okay, Commissioner Wagner?
Yeah, Michelle, it, it turns out that the Water Pollution Control Authority is dealing with odors from the sewer plant. And there are experts who will go around and, I don't know how they acquire this skill, but they can identify odors. And we've had those experts going around in the vicinity of the sewer plant. I'm wondering if you could talk to Tony Manfree? And maybe one of those experts would know something about odor issues related to marijuana. I mean, they can say, well, that's a swamp odor, that's, that's manure, that's your sewer plant, that's, you know, a restaurant. They could, these people can actually tell you what the odor is coming from just by smelling it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Commissioners, is there anything else we need to touch on tonight? Michelle, anything? Mr. Thomas or Mr. Snow, anything else for tonight? Okay, then. Michelle, when's the next time we could get this on our agenda? I know 14th, I think we're pretty busy.
Yeah, we probably might want to go 28th.
Yeah, okay. So could I have a motion to continue the public hearing on June 28th?
I move that we continue the public hearing to June 28th.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Carey seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Let me just get back to my agenda here. Okay, that concludes our public hearing, so I'll open a regular meeting of the planning and zoning for Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. Our first item is public participation. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on something that is not on our agenda? Now would be the time. Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none. We'll move right to bonds. We have a page of bonds on the table here. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Motion to approve application 22-20P, the Golden Lampstand TNC, request for a two-year temporary unconditional permit to establish a small parking area.
What, what, bonds?
Oh, you mean the wrong thing, Eric. Same size paper. Sorry, Michelle. It's quite all right. Let me start over here. Ah, let's see.
Subdivision?
Yeah, subdivision bond, engineering recommends a bond of the amount of $920,000 for subdivision public improvement associated with application 21-39P, Kilkenny Heights 2, and landscaping bond.
Oh, we'll do them one at a time here.
All right, one at a time.
Okay.
Motion to approve this one.
Motion to set the bond at $920,000.
Thank you.
That was a second?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Landscaping bond?
Landscaping bond for 20-30P, Windsor Federal, in the amount of $4,000, with a reduction of $4,000, leaving a balance of zero. Motion to approve landscaping bond.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of the reduction of landscaping bond, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. And we have inland wetlands agency conservation commission bond.
Good, hate acronyms, okay. We have one for 20-30P, Windsor Federal, ENS, in the amount of $10,000, a reduction of $10,000, leaving a balance of zero.
And we, we can do the other one at the same time.
Okay. And 20-30P, Windsor Federal Stormwater, in the amount of $10,000, a reduction of $10,000, also with a balance of zero.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cavignero, any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay. Let's see, we have minutes. Let's see, we have minutes, we had minutes from April 26th and May 10th. Did anybody have any questions, concerns, comments? If not, we can accept those by consensus, agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed, okay. Old business, Michelle.
Uh, nothing?
Nothing. Okay, um, correspondence reports, um.
The only thing I would bring up is you did receive correspondence from the Energy Committee. Um, and I know Commissioner Wagner's here as well as Town Councilor, Mayor Kosickowski. Did you all get that copy or I have it to give you?
Uh.
Sorry, I have it to hand out.
Okay, I don't remember reading it.
If anybody wants to briefly talk about it, or if I have a screen, this is from the Energy Committee, they're going to go with that.
Okay.
You may have got it electronically previously, but we did print it out perfectly.
Okay, and I'll just report on the subcommittees. Uh, we did schedule, uh, subcommittee meetings. We had one subcommittee meeting, um, which was brief in nature. And, uh, the other two committees, we ended up canceling both of the meetings for various reasons. But we will be rescheduling them in the future. The manufacturing warehouse, um, committee, Commissioner Foley is not going to be able to serve on it. So I am looking for another participant. Right now, it's myself, Commissioner Bernstein, and it was Commissioner Foley. But if somebody else would like to participate in that, um, Michelle, what, oh, and, that, was that a Monday night meeting?
Yeah. 5:45 on Monday, yeah.
Right, so if.
Um, I don't have it in front of me, but it was supposed to be this past Monday, so it would be probably the, 13th would be the next meeting.
Okay, so, um, at this time, if there's no volunteer, I'll ask commissioners to, Mike, did you want to speak or? Oh, you were red.
I'll kick back for now, but if nobody volunteers, I'll somehow try to do this.
Okay.
That's a big concern of mine, that whole warehouse thing. But that's it, I started a new job and it's, I'm grappling with finding time to do things, so that's my only hangup.
Yeah, and being on, I, is that a possibility?
Well.
The whole thing is.
Really not, I really should just have three people assigned to it.
Right, that would possibly be a quorum, because we're sending out emails and stuff and that would be four people in the group and that is a quorum at that point.
Right, you know what, if it's us three who are on the subdivision one, if you toss that one in and we discuss it perhaps at the same time.
There's no reason you can't, we, well, then Paul's kind of on it. You're separate to the subcommittee on the warehouse, you and Bart.
I could do it, but I can't do Mondays, so, unless you want to change the date.
If you wanted to pick another date and time, I'm, you know, I can be flexible.
Yeah.
I can be during the day, I can be whenever you want.
Because it seems like the subdivision one seems like an easier one. That's one of the better-written.
It's probably not as much to that part of it than other ones, yeah.
It's really not that bad when I went through it.
Yeah, I think we, we have our concerns, but it, it really is a tweaking.
Yeah.
So maybe if we had Mike on the warehouse one and then Steve could fill in on the residential one, because he was going to be looking at our, our subdivision regulations anyhow. So then we could have Steve be on that one and come up with a time that works for Steve.
Yeah.
Okay, um, what I'd like to do is trying to get some kind of calendar. Because it's easier for me to plan.
Sure.
With that, so, um, maybe you could work up a draft calendar, whatever, for those meeting dates. But still, um, Steve can't do Mondays.
Yeah, so.
So what are our other options for that, Paul? Any?
No, it's actually, it's going to be Carolyn, Steve, and you for the residential, Paul, Mike, and you for the warehouse.
Right.
So if Mike can do Mondays, and it's 5:45, is we get scheduled, why don't you do that?
The warehouse is Monday 5:45.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then if we have us, if we want you to do that in time.
Right, right.
But are you planning on attending at Mondays?
Yeah, I'm kind of your staff. I will give my time to you as much as I can, I don't have any other commitments. Because it's my job.
But the only, the only thing about that, um, so would they be alternating Mondays? Because Carolyn, it's 5:45 start time.
We had set up alternating Mondays, so one week we'd be working on a residential subcommittee, the next week was the warehouse subcommittee. So that's how we had set up the calendar originally.
Right. Now, the final committee, which is multifamily, correct? Um, that was going to meet, uh, well, that, was it last Tuesday it got canceled? Would, we, I'm, I'm just contemplating in my head if we want to meet on an off Tuesday, for that, like hypothetically, like the first Tuesday of the month.
Close to the second, when you have a regular meeting.
Right. And I'm also thinking out, uh, in the distance where I've got a trip I want to take. Our longest stretch generally is from, I believe, our fourth,
Tuesday.
Tuesday to our second, or our first Tuesday of the month. So, um.
You know, we may get to a point where we meet a couple of times that I can get you some materials and we don't always have to come and meet in person, that we maybe have some things that we can work on. So, you know, I think just getting going is what's really what the critical point at this point is, so that we can get the concerns and start working forward. So maybe, you know, we'll set them up the best we can and if we have to change them moving forward, we can.
Okay, so if we could do a calendar based on those.
So, so just so I'm clear, are you available on Tuesdays? If we set something on a Tuesday afternoon, I mean, what time are you, are you good on Tuesdays?
Are you talking about like the, the earliest available on Tuesdays?
Yeah.
I'll be completely honest, usually right up until 5:00, once I hit 5:00, then I'm free. I'm usually booked for most of the day on Tuesday.
Okay, so maybe we can contact Bob in between you, Bob, and you. We can come up with a Tuesday, an off-meeting Tuesday.
Yeah.
In a time that works and we'll get our first meeting going.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Got all that, Caitlin?
Residential.
Turns out I also have a problem with a lot of Tuesdays because of WPA and the Energy Committee, so. WPCA meets at 7:00, Energy Committee meets, well, we meet on the same day as the planning and zoning, so I guess that's not an issue. So, so just so, uh, whatever our committee is, I think we should work out our, our time schedule. I can meet during the day, I don't know about the others.
I can. Okay, so if you could put together a draft schedule and circulate it to the commission and we'll go from there. Let's see, um, I do not have anything else. Does anybody have anything? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion re-adjourn?
Okay, we have a, uh, motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have motion and second, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.